Seven o'clock.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Eric.
Yes.
Eric. Okay, adoption of agenda. Motion. Larry, Chuck. All in favor? I oppose. Agenda is adopted. Public meeting, participation rules. Please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Two, begin by stating your name and address. Three, give your comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed, or to ensure that everyone has time to speak and that we can address other items on the agenda. We may limit then individual speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow you one additional time period to provide new information for or five, be respectful of the planning commission applicant and your neighbors. Thank you again for attending. Tom Hilbert, Chair. Okay, public comment. In any and some in not in regard to the case and something. I guess it could be in regard to the case too, but we'd rather that they comment during the review of the case. Do we have anybody?
Nobody else online.
Nobody else is online. Okay. Correspondence. Oh, you are right. You're right. Provo minutes, February eighth and March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty twenty one. Larry. Made the motion.
Support.
Support by Chuck. In favor?
I.
Opposed. Okay, now then, public comment. Okay, now correspondence. Okay, we have a letter. Report from oh three dash two zero two one from Rick Duel and a letter from L and C Dubey. Okay, I'll read it. Larry and Christine Dubey, five five nine one, US twenty three north. Elpina, Michigan, Mr. Thomas Hilbert, Chairperson, Charter Township of Elpina Planning Commission. Four eighty four three eight five, US twenty three north, Elpina, Michigan, case. Case P zero three dash two one, John Rusinski, right? Okay, John Rusinski, Dear Mr. Hilbert, being adjacent property owners. We have no objection to Mr. Rusinski. Rusinski zoning request. We wish him well in his endeavor. Sincerely, Larry and Christine Dubey. Okay. Okay, we will. Yes, make a motion to accept correspondence. Larry, Chuck is support. Tell me when I, when you think we should, we have to roll call. I'm not exactly sure on that one, but. Okay. Okay, all in favor? Opposed. Okay. Okay, public hearing, case P zero three two one, John Rusinski requests a special approval use for a class B used vehicle dealer. Property is located at five nine one one, US twenty three north parcel. Number zero one three dash zero three four dash zero 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 dash zero nine zero dash zero zero in the general business B two zone district. Okay, now. Motion to open public hearing. Of course. And that's just a. By hand. Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay. All opposed. Okay. We're opening public hearing. So I got here noted any correspondence that was received, and we've already noted that discussion. Okay, well, this is your your chance to tell us anything that you want to tell us, John. And I don't know which ones, you're John, you're John. Okay, and you are. Okay, okay. So you're both John.
No, I'm Joe.
Joe, Joe and John. Alright. Alright, go ahead, John.
I checked with the second sign.
Okay. A what size? Four by eight, okay. And there's nobody on the zooming in, Nathan? For comment? Okay, okay. Okay, planning commission comments. I have one. What about the, is the driveway sufficient according to M dot? Did you? He said, okay, alright, because I was just wondering, sometimes they require curb and gutter. I work for M dot, so sometimes, you know.
He just told me the best place to put the sign, in the right side, next to that tree line. That way it doesn't, you know, build the billboard at the left side.
Okay. Okay, okay. Well, it's good. You you contacted them and Rick Ferguson, yes, yes.
Who is who? Who is he? I know Sam Dot, but who, who is the gentleman you're speaking of?
That was the gentleman that came.
Does he have a name?
Oh, Rick.
Rick Ferguson. Yes, I'm sorry. I assume everybody knows him because I do, but.
Well, I didn't know.
He's the driveway guy. Okay, good.
And Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
On John's behalf, he reached out into this process. We've had a couple different meetings going through all the requirements of the application. He's been very forthcoming with his plans and very receptive to whether it would be M dot for ingress and egress, traffic speed right away. And I just kind of gave him the pointers to get to this point, and it's been a pleasure thus far.
Okay. Good.
Norm. Do we have any issues on signed ordinances, or is that something the state can control at that, at that point?
Can I address that?
You can.
Yeah. So yes, in our in ordinance one forty two, we do have a very comprehensive sign section. And at the speeds, he may actually have to come. Potentially unless he's in request of not only the special use, which is part of this zone. It could be potentially this board's tip of the hat, given the considerations of M dot's already have been there to a limiting size. I believe that the speed limit of fifty five or greater. It could be, it would make no sense to make John come back for a second special use. I think at that speed, it is up to four by eight as a permitted. But that could be one of the stipulations of a sign not to exceed in this process.
And it sounds like M dot was good with the four by eight. Okay, okay. And that's a that two by two, that's for a home block, home business. Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's not this. Yeah.
It does actually start there, and then they can.
Okay, okay.
By zone and by traffic speed and by any other complexity, vertical height on the wall, off the wall, freestanding, mounted, raised, backlit. We have just about every parameter covered.
Okay, okay. So would you put it up closer to the building then, or would you put it?
I'd say a little bit past that sixty foot. That way you kind of see that the tree that kind of blocked my driveway, so I don't want to have like you see it last minute type thing. And I got permission from the able to come back and see it from that.
You're gonna make billboard on the one side.
Yeah, I see that. I was out there and I took picture and I see that billboard, so we don't, we.
They told me this, I'm originally going to put it in front of the shop, or you told me you don't want to get too close to that billboard that weren't from them, that you block them. Right. Put it on the other side of the driveway, that way it's not way, or hit middle or snow way, that's about there. It's the best spot for it. Stay behind the line and don't feel bad.
Okay.
You won't see.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Norm, go ahead.
Did you operate this as a car dealership before or?
I owned the building before. I went to this kind of like store, trying to do this. But then I bought a different property years ago, and I went to that a little bit, we don't, I got to talk to that presidential. And then I, this is going to be a lot of hoop, so that's why I kind of bought the building. Like, I think of it, eight years ago, I had to do that aside for just, so I was trying to do. We figured this would be a lot easier to get it wrong. Even saying you're not around neighbors, that's what I guess. Like, even once before, I was also Jesse Road people.
Yes, I remember you guys came in, yeah.
Yes, and then I become talking guys, and then the working neighbors, and I did this because.
This apparently was auto sales before at one time?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Looks like you have plenty of room to work around there. I didn't drove in, look around.
It definitely makes it nice in the night, up next to the behind. Makes a lot of use as well, turning my house before, and we'll set up for what I want.
Okay, anybody else? Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to close public hearing. Larry, Chuck, all in favor of closing public hearing? I oppose. Okay, closed. Okay, additional discussion about case. We need a motion to adopt the findings of facts.
Almost.
Larry. You tell me, Anne Marie, when I need it. Okay, there's one we don't, and I'm getting at you. Okay. Okay, property located at five one, five nine one one, US twenty three north, Elpina, Michigan. B district, district standards. The parcel is located in a general business B two zoning. And within the B two overlay district, outdoor sales of motor vehicles requires a special use to meet site plan review and must meet supplemental development regulations of section seven two two outdoor sales. Lot area and lot width. The parcel complies with minimum of lot size, a lot length exceeds four times the width, however it is. It is a lot of record. Building height, one story structure complies, lot coverage complies with standard setbacks complies with standards. That's B and B.
Okay, so at that point now. You make a motion. Supporting adoption of the findings of that.
Okay. We need a motion to adopt sections A and B of the finding of facts. Larry and Anne Marie, all in favor? I oppose. Okay.
So then, as the, then you go through the section six oh two, A, B, C, D, and also section seven eighteen. And as the commission review each standard, Chairperson.
Adjacent uses and.
It's just like, well, we have, it's like you'll have a discussion on each one of those points. So when you face a like, we're, section six oh two, you have a, you have a report.
Mr. Duel will change the format.
Oh, yeah, alright, alright, section six oh two, alright.
All in favor of the motion on A and B.
Oh, didn't I do that? Okay, all in favor? I thought I did, because you, okay. Okay. We'll do it again. Findings, section A and B.
It's been supported and it's been.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, alright. There, alright. Okay, then we go to section six oh two, special land use approval, approval standards. Okay. Jason uses the use. Location and size and size of use and the nature of and intensity of operation shall not be such as to disrupt the orderly and proper development of a district as a whole and or be in conflict with or discouraged principal permitted uses of the district or neighboring lands and buildings. The property is located US twenty three. And in a commercial business corridor, the eastern part of the parcel butts residential zone properties, however the residences on those parcels are located at on Bloom Road and Long Lake Road. A review of aerial photos indicates residential structures are located, located greater than one quarter mile from proposed facility. So the, the standard has been met. Okay. Does everybody agree that the standard has been met, I should say? Okay. And if you don't, if you don't, any, if anybody doesn't agree with anything, you know, don't be afraid to stop me.
The minutes are going to reflect it this way. The commission reviews each standard, which is what I'm doing. And then if we don't say anything, then, you know, Chairperson Hilbert will note that we didn't oppose it.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we didn't oppose any, we didn't oppose anything on number one. Number two, special land usage shall not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of traffic noise, vibration, dust, fume, smoke, glare, flashing lights, or disposal of waste and the operation of any principal permitted use. The property is located US twenty three. Commercial business corridor, all mechanical and bodywork required to ready the vehicles for sale shall be conducted offsite. The proposed sales lot up with a lot up with five vehicles and is not anticipated to generate excessive amounts of traffic. Oil, fluid, solvents, and potentially harmful materials must be be properly stored and properly disposed of offsite in accordance to state and federal laws. The standard has been met. Yes, no, not applicable. Believe the standard has been met. Number three, the use shall not increase hazard from fires or other danger to either the properties or adjacent properties. The property has been used for commercial purposes. The proposed business will operate as a sales lot with mechanical and auto body work required to ready. The vehicles for sale will be conducted offsite. And he has that all in his application that of who's going to do that. And so this standard I believe has been met. Playing commission may consider impact on property values of nearby properties when determining impact of proposed special land use on the adjacent properties. This standard has been met. He's in the process of improving the property. Traffic and access, the use shall not increase traffic hazard or cause congestion on public highways and streets of the area. Adequate access to the use shall be furnished by either existing roads or highways or proposed roads and highways. The business will use an existing driveway, the close, closest driveway on the same side of the highway is approximately six hundred fifty feet. The five vehicle sales lot is not anticipated to generate excessive amounts of traffic. This center has been met. Waters, the water and sewage disposal system shall be adequate for the proposed use. Information was not provided. I'm sure there's a well and approved well and septic, okay? Okay. Okay, this standard has been met. The use will be adequately served by central public services and facilities, or that the person's responsible for the establishment of the proposed use will adequately provide any such service or facility. The applicant will need to provide any essential services not provided by the community. Okay, this standard has been met. Okay, the use will not create excessive additional public costs and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the township. The proposed operation is not anticipated to create excessive additional costs and should have a positive impact on the local economy. I believe it will. The proposed use will not create substantially negative impact on the natural resources of the township or the natural environment as a whole. The site is already developed as a commercial operation. The applicant did not propose to clear additional forest lands. So the standard has been met.
Excuse me. That's your intent at this point is not to do a timber harvest. Just clean it up and looking good. You've got a good spot. Hundred percent with you.
Okay, in general, the use will not impair the purpose and intent of this ordinance. The standard has been met. Okay. Motion to motion to adopt the Rick Duel's finding of facts.
May I interject because it is kind of disembodied. We actually have article seven of seven twenty two. There are all two existing. One, basically, that would still need to be a standard to be met.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good, good, good catch. Okay, section D, relevant zoning ordinance. Go ahead.
So this was, you're doing section six oh two, paragraph D, which you just did. And also section seven eighteen.
Seven point two. I think that's. Seven point two would be the correct section.
That's okay. We just want to get it. Get it right, that's all.
Okay, so then, alright, so you're gonna read that.
Yes. Yeah, outdoors, section seventy two, seven two two, article seven supplemental regulation, section seven twenty two, outdoor sales on B two districts. Outdoor sales space for exclusive sales and use automobiles, house trailers, travel trailers, rental or other recreational vehicles is subject to the following ingress and egress to the outdoor sales area shall be twenty five feet from a street intersection or residential district. The driveway is located approximately thirteen hundred and twenty feet from the nearest intersection of US twenty three and Bloom Road, and is located approximately twenty six hundred feet from the nearest residential zone property on US twenty three. So this standard has been met. Okay, when adjacent to district zone residential, there shall be provided a completely obscuring wall landscape screen or, or fence, six fence, six foot in height measured from the surface of the ground of the abutting residential district. Okay, then we got the adjacent parcels, zero three, zero one three, zero three four, zero zero zero, four five zero one, and zero one three, zero three four, zero zero one, zero, 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 and zero, one, three, zero, three, four, zero, zero, one, two, zero, two, and zero, three, zero, four, zero, 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 three, zero, zero. Our zone are two residential. At the present time, common boundaries of parcel on the north and east side are forested with no residents visible. One of the parcels along the south boundary is zone R two, but does not have residences visible from the proposed use. A view of aerial foot, photos show natural vegetation screening might be lacking on the applicant's parcel. This should be reviewed at the planning commission meeting to determine if additional screening is necessary.
My input to that would be as a condition, we might consider that in the future as a condition of this approval is that after at some point, somebody builds a house, a residential situation, is that then a screening come necessary at that point? And I think you know, that's just neighborhood stuff, but I think we should consider that as a condition and it's up to the up to the commission, but I think that would be a good idea. I'm, I'm with Nathan saying that it looks like you've got your act together. And this is new for us, the first time we've really got into this type of situation, so we're a little rocky here. But the thing of it is, is that in the future or I think it's a good thing and it's up to the commission, but I think we should, as a condition of residential construction would take place adjacent to and within a viewing area, I think then you have to address that. Now, at that point, I understand that that part of that parcel over there is, is where a B two. And I think that parcel, what I'm, I'm thinking, and I.
It says to the so.
Twenty six hundred to the Doobie's residence, which is a zone, and that's in our free property, but is existing in the.
So it's something for us to consider and for you to. No, I don't think that that would be.
No, I don't think we would. I don't think that's our intent to zone that residential. We're trying to have more opportunities for.
Yeah, you're very positive. You're very positive, saying along the overlay and in that area. Right, and if you, you do everything that you're saying you'll do, I have absolutely. That's exactly what I'm saying, but if it's within the view. Yeah, yeah, and I think. Yeah, yeah, and I think and with the attitude you have, I'm sure it wouldn't be a problem, but I think it should be a condition, but it's up to the Or you might sell a hunk of yours, you know, or someone might build a house and we'd have to go back and redo that and then you'd have to put up a barrier and
Actually, the residential, I think, is what faces Boom Road. And it abuts his property, but the back of his property. And Larry and you said that's our three, Larry and Christine Dubey, okay.
Sorry, three in the overlay.
Okay, and it's on in overlay, okay.
I mean, that's like
I don't think it'll Yeah, but then we gotta be careful that we don't uncover a light situation too, where somebody comes in and cuts down the trees on their property and now they're exposed to the highway. Something that might be a negative thing, like, you know, one way or another, I'm just saying is
I just, there is a catch-all, and I think I understand exactly where you're coming from, and I think that you would be receptive to that. I also wholeheartedly agree with you, Ms. Rich, that it would not be a fair stipulation in the future use, the catch-all to a class B state dealership license is that if all of high water came and everything was cleared and residential were to a but said property, class B dealership would then instate the fact that his yard has to be enclosed by fencing it. So there's a catch-all. The state has parameters that so the natural buffer strip is I kind of, I I understand Rick's comment, but that is swamp. And then legal process and et cetera, et cetera. So I think that everybody kind of is on the same page, but there is a catch-all and that's the state of Michigan in regards to a class B dealership.
Sounds like a plan. No, no, that was on for discussion. I didn't make a motion or anything. I just put it on the table for discussion. So that, yeah, so we don't, you know. And the other thing that concerned to be a good neighbor and be a part of the economic community and development. You see, you see one of my problems is now I have to take this and go back to the county and say, hey, we've got ourselves another businessman and he looks like he's going to be very, very good for our community. And so I just want a total understanding of what you guys, and what's your personality and your intentions, so.
Yeah, we don't want, we just
Oh, yes.
I mean, I guess we're just going over all this, so we don't, you know. I have nothing against Lee's auto there, but you know, if we were reviewing that today, it probably wouldn't quite look like that, but yeah, yes, yes.
At this point, I'll call for the motion, Chair.
Are we? Okay.
Yeah, and the
Considerations. Okay, we have, we can make a motion to approve special land use for operation of used car dealership at the address. Oh, yes. That's what you're doing? I'm sorry, I got ahead of you.
Well, we gotta have it first before we
Yeah, slow me down. Okay, who is second? Larry, all in favor? Oh, all right. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, according to the, you know, we can make a motion to approve it like it is. We can make a motion with conditions or we can make a motion to deny. That's our three options. So and we don't, we're not having any conditions, is that what I'm understanding? So then somebody should make a motion.
You, you, you disafforded the commission, the standards. But now upon review of meeting said standards of six oh two and seven twenty-two. Now it is the basis of the motion as it's one of the three options, option one or option three, if you're not going to set forth in any conditions. So this would be a standalone motion.
Okay, so. Okay.
Okay.
So.
To grant.
Square bill, Larry. Okay, now this has to be a Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I hold the economic development chair in the county. And thank you, thank you very much for what you're doing and success too. Appreciate that.
And then if you would come up here and Glad you're doing business in the township. Okay, just sign that and, and date it and then sign this on and date it and then you keep that one. Well, yeah, you better get selling cars. Those diapers aren't free. And Larry doesn't have anything to say.
How long you been in there, huh?
Different culture.
Okay, you guys are, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, good luck. Yes.
You know how to get a hold of me if you need anything done.
Okay, Nathan, do you have anything to add or?
For the record, no, but it sounds like we can have, once we finish this template of a meeting, I can stop recording and we can
Well, we have been, that's kind of, yeah, we'll take, we'll take a motion. Yeah, they're telling me at school board meetings that we need, we need motions, yeah, yeah. Okay, Chuck, you, you motion?
I did.
Larry, seconds, all in favor of a journey? All right, opposed, okay, there now.